For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the Municipal Council Meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the City of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Good evening. Welcome to Alpena City Council Meeting, October 17th, 2016. Call the roll, please.
Johnson?
Here.
Nielsen?
Here.
Noak?
Here.
Sexton?
Here.
Walagora?
Here. First, I pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Okay, any modifications to the agenda this evening? Approval of the minutes, regular session of October 3rd, 2016, and special session of October 6th, 2016. I have one for the special session on October 6th, which is Kami Sumbric-Bates was noted as a Green Township Supervisor, and Karen will change that to Green Township Trustee. Anything other than that? Okay, citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. If you'd like to do so, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records. This is the only time during the meeting you're allowed to address council. The consent agenda this evening, there's A, bills to be allowed in the amount of $576,850.63. B is one council appointment to the Recreation Advisory Board for a three-year term expiring October 1st, 2019, is Patricia Mowat. C is Keith Timm's request for a noise variance from 10:00 to 11:00 p.m. on October 29th, 2016, for a Halloween party at 6:04 Long Lake Avenue.
May we approve the consent agenda as presented?
Seven.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Down to announcements. A is that Halloween trick-or-treat hours are from 5:30 to 7:30 on Monday, October 31st, 2016. And B is for city residents, ballots are available at City Hall for absentee voting for the November 8th election, general election.
We have almost 600 absentee voters already, and just want to remind people that if you're disabled out of town the day of the election, or you're six-year-old, or you can come into City Hall, or we can send you a ballot, and you do not have to go to the polls that day, you can vote absentee.
Thank you, Karen. Down to report of officers. A is City Treasurer's quarterly financial report, July 1st, 2016 to September 30th, 2016.
Through the first quarter of 2016-17, we should be at about 25% of our budget year. Revenue is at 45% for the general fund, and of course, we always tend to be high at this time because we've gotten most of our property taxes in. We collected about 91% of those already. Expenses are at 26%, which is just slightly over the target. Some of this is due to large capital projects that we completed in the first quarter. For example, I think the bypass trail had a few things like that. The salary-wage line items are over budget for almost all departments. Parks and Rec, Cemetery, and DPW have summer help, so that explains why most of their expenses or the higher amount is in the summer. And then police and fire are due to overtime, especially the summer events for the police where they have the Fourth of July and events like that that call them out for more overtime. An area to keep our eyes on that Greg and I talked about today is that our cash and investments, that's the last page of your Green Financial. Our cash this year compared to the same timeframe as the last two years is quite a bit lower, significantly lower. And part of that is because we did use some of our fund balance, and we don't have the exact amount yet, but we'll have that soon. The auditors have everything now, and they just need to pull it together. So we might come close to what we budgeted, which was about $225,000, but it looks like might be about $270,000. Out of our fund balance. So, we'll see. You know, there still may be some audit adjustments and things like that. So, that is one of the reasons, and then the capital, and we kind of looked at that, and we're just going to really have to keep an eye on it. We have received no personal property reimbursement yet, so we'll see how that goes. Remember, we were concerned about that, we just weren't sure. And they promised 100% reimbursement. Now they're talking, maybe this year we'll get 100%, but maybe not next year. They're just looking at the essential services now that they give us that as 100%. So, it's just a guessing game.
There's no timeframe on when they would decide that, is there?
They change the law every year. And we still aren't sure. We've taken some webinars and things like that, and it's very confusing. So, we'll just see as we go.
Treasury, who oversees it, when they explain it, they don't know most of the time what they're completely talking about. They're confused. They're in webinars, and they're as confused as the people listening to them trying to get information. So, it's just a guessing game. One of the worst-written set of laws that you could have.
If we do end up taking that 270, approximately $1,000, out of fund balance, like we had budgeted, it would leave us with 25% fund balance to start this fiscal year. So, we're right about there. That's where we're at right now. So, when we budget this year, we're going to have to really take a good look at everything. We have gotten a lot of big capital projects done, which is nothing glamorous, but like Public Safety got the roof almost done, we got one more section on that, and Mike's been working hard, Kiloszewski, I call them VABs or VAVs. And then here, we got the Tuck Point done. So, lots of things getting done, those are coming out of construction funds, though not the child fund. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you again for the report.
Can we get our receipt of file?
Second.
Noak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Next up is insurance RFP recommendation.
Excuse me. In August of this year, the city solicited RFPs for health, vision, dental, life, and long-term disability insurance, and associated services for the calendar year of 2017. The bids were due September 19th, and a total of six bids or proposals and associated services were received from the following agencies. Alpena Agency, obviously here in Alpena, Lappin Agency of Alpena, Hub International out of Grand Rapids, Franklin Benefit Solutions, FBS, out of Grand Blank, Brown Insurance out of Saginaw, and National Benefit Service Center out of Maitland, Florida. An internal insurance review committee consisting of city employees, which included myself, Kathy Himes, the Human Resources Administrator, Brett Miller from the Fire EMS, Eric Camp Police, Lucille Bray, the departmental clerical, and Garth Groky of DPW, reviewed the proposals, and then narrowed it down to four that we actually interviewed, or had them come in to make presentations. And those were Alpena Agency, Lappin Agency, Hub International, and FBS. The instructions in the RFP package stated that different vendors could be awarded specific insurances, not necessarily it was an all or nothing, it could be broken up. Following the interviews, the committee met to discuss the pros and cons of each vendor and to make a final recommendation for council. Additionally, the members agreed on the health insurance plans to recommend for the coming year. In the end, since all the vendors utilized Blue Cross Blue Shield for their health, including vision, plans, the costs were the same from all vendors for the same plans. And most also used the same carrier options for the non-health insurance quotes. Consequently, the selection of an agent came down to service. And the final unanimous recommendation of the committee was to split the insurance award as follows. For the BCBS health and vision insurance, it would be Hub International out of Grand Rapids. And for dental, which would be Delta Dental, and also Dearborn National for life and long-term disability, we will utilize Alpena Agency. The committee was impressed with the many services from Hub, both at the human resources level as well as individual employee assistance. Included, all these included without additional fees. These include an house legal counsel to assist staff with the myriad of federal regulations, compliance support, and report generation, and a strong philosophy of looking ahead and thinking outside the box for ways to provide quality plans while reducing costs. Although our agent, Alpena Agency, has provided us with very reliable and timely service, it could not match that offered by Hub without additional cost to the city. The company is national, with its headquarters in Chicago and actually international in scope, but it does have basically what are independent state affiliates. And the one in Michigan is out of Grand Rapids, has 140 Michigan-based employees, which provide a thorough understanding of the health insurance market here in Michigan. So, they're very familiar with how things work here. In regard to our health insurance plans, we opted to terminate our current BCBS Community Blue policies effective January 1st of 2017. The premium renewal increase would have been approximately 2.2% to 2.8%. We were fortunate to have a very slight decrease in premiums for this current calendar year, which allowed us to continue for another year with the plans that we've had for the last several. With the 2017 increases, we revisited the BCBS Simply Blue plans, which include two high-deductible health savings account plans. After careful review and consideration, it was decided that the city would offer four Simply Blue plans, two traditional, and two HSA. And they're outlined in terms of the premiums, what the city share is, what the employees share, and then cities' contributions into either a flexible savings account or a health savings account. The trend both in Michigan and nationally is to move toward HSA plans. To encourage use of the plans, the city will provide a significant contribution to each active employee's health savings account during this first year, while encouraging employees to make their own pre-tax contributions to their individual HSA as well. Even with these contributions, the reduced premiums will result in a net $71,000 to $78,000 annual savings to the city for calendar year 2017. It was understood that as the initial savings the city is eating away by inevitable future plan cost increases, the amount of the city contribution will likely decrease, basically just trying to hold costs at least level, if we can. It is hoped that by that time, employees will develop the practice of personally investing in their HSAs, which will allow them to grow while providing a necessary cushion when major expenditures do arise. For younger and/or healthy employees who utilize medical services infrequently each year, it is an excellent mechanism to save tax-free for future medical costs in a manner similar, but with greater tax advantages than our retirement savings plan. We also have flexible savings accounts that are offered, which are similar to accounts that we've used in the past, and these will be available for employees choosing the traditional plans. Basically, with an HSA, what goes in is tax-free, as long as it's not medical, it goes out tax-free. So, it's basically very much of a win-win. Each of the new dental, life, and long-term disability insurance plans will provide equal or better coverage than the city's current plan at a reduced cost. Total annual savings for these policies are estimated at approximately $46,000. So, the total potential savings, including the health, for next year could be in the range, and we're projecting somewhere close to $120,000. So, after some of the bad news, at least concerns that Karen put out, there's a little bit hopefully of good news of where we at least will have. Look at some savings. The dental was huge, the amount of savings. We dropped from about $112,000 to $69,000 a year, so it was huge. So, as city manager and on behalf of the Employee Insurance Review Committee, we recommend the following council actions. There are three of them. First is to award the contractor service, the city's health and vision insurance agent, to Hub International of Grand Rapids, Michigan, utilizing Blue Cross Blue Shield as the health and vision provider. Two, award the contractor, Alpena Agency, as the city's dental, life, and long-term disability insurance agent, utilizing the insurance providers listed previously in this memo. And third, to approve the use of the BCBS Simply Blue health and vision plans as outlined in the attached spreadsheet and described earlier for the upcoming calendar year. Despite the fact that the city is saving money by converting to the Simply Blue traditional and high-deductible HSA model for the coming year, the city will be paying more than 80% of the total annual cost of providing health benefits to its employees. This is due to the fact that the city is paying 80% of the employees' premiums, but will also be contributing to either an employee's HSA or FSA account. In order to comply with the regulatory provisions of PA 152, the city will be required to approve by resolution the opt-out option from the statute, which we have done, I think, the last four years. This will bring the city to legally pay more than 80% of the total health insurance cost while still saving us money. The opt-out request is the next item on the agenda, so assuming you approve this, we will then be asking for consideration of that as well. In conclusion, I would like to thank HR Director or Administrator Kathy Himes for all her work in finalizing the RFP, coordinating all the vendors, and obtaining answers to numerous questions. I would also like to thank each of the city employees who served on the Insurance Review Committee. Without their participation and valuable input, the RFP review process would have been far slower, more cumbersome, and far less certain in regard to the final outcome. So, we're grateful, well done to each of them individually, and as. If you have any questions, we'll be happy to try to answer those. Are there, there's at least two other members of the committee in the audience.
Is there any benefit to doing anything longer-term with either of these companies? I'm assuming from reading this that it's going to be a yearly review?
There was, like on dental, they actually offered a two-year fixed. But, when I did the calculation, it was basically if we did just the one year, and then we took what they had a set for two years, we would have to have an 8.8% increase in our rates the second year to match that. If we had only a 4% increase next year, then we would be actually spending more by locking in for two years. Kathy did do some checking, I think it was 3%, 4% was kind of an average for Delta. So, we decided it was better to just go on a year-to-year. I mean, it's not to say they couldn't suddenly hit us with 10, but it's not been their history. And most of the others have been. I can't remember, was the life for more than one year?
Yes, two.
I think that one may have been, the life and long-term may have been for two years on that one.
Just as an FYI, since I've been here, we have not had increases in our life, that's just not a typical annual increase, unless they see something significant that concerns them. But, I've been here for seven and a half years, and we have not received an increase yet.
It's just that with the new one, the rates are lower, at a lower rate. And we've had good reviews. Kathy talked to some who have utilized Lincoln, and they've been very happy. Of course, health, that changes every year. They're not going to lock in for more than the one year.
Is it typical for this to be pieced out with different providers?
Yeah, because right now, does Alpena Agency handle all of our life, that's just we handle directly with?
No. They handle life, long-term disability, and Blue Cross Blue Shield, and then we have no direct red for dental.
And on the 80/20 split, I understand why we would be over. Is that, how temporary is that? Is that through the life, the contracts, and then maybe we'll look at that, or is it really just looking at it for this one year?
This is for a year, and this is what the unions, everybody understood, that they do vary. Well, basically, I don't see us changing the 80/20 on the premiums, it would just be if we do any other contributions. And, no matter what that is, if we have any contribution at all, we're going to have to opt out in order to technically make those legal choices. Even if we are able to hold our own and save money, it's still necessary because of the way the law's written.
Anything else? I don't have any questions. Certainly appreciate the involvement of the department representatives, who don't necessarily have to do that, I don't think so. It was pretty nice for you guys to involve them and get them in the process.
Just one other thing, I, of course, distributed, you know, what the rates. In the end, again, these were all rounded off to the nearest dollar, so final rates may be 50 cents higher or lower, unless something happens and we suddenly get a different rate, in which case I said I would notify everybody, but I'm not expecting that. But I've, we've sent two our unions, or representatives from the different departments, that and the benefits at a glance, so they can now distribute them to our employees. And I've offered to attend any meetings if they would like to have me to kind of explain it. And also, our new rep from Hub has, will be up here, and will be here, she has other clients up here, and so will come here to go over and answer any questions. We also have our Blue Cross rep is still here in town. We can bring Ariel, she can come in at any time to also address any questions of the employees. So, we feel we have a good grasp with the right people to answer all the questions. Enrollment will be during next month, to get everybody enrolled in whatever plan they want, that gives time for the agent to get everything in place, and get all the payroll deductions, and especially people going to HSAs to set those up and everything else. So, January 1st, hopefully, everything will be ready to go.
And you want these addressed individually?
Well, you could approve all three of them if you're so inclined that you agree to all of them, you could have agreed to all three, or make a motion for all three of the actions.
There's some, I don't know, you don't have an issue with if we want to address them all at the same time? I certainly don't. But as long as it's okay with Bill and somebody wants to do that. Do you understand what I'm asking?
Yeah, you can do them all as one.
Okay. I move we award the contractor to serve as city's health insurance vision to Hub International of Grand Rapids, utilizing Blue Cross Blue Shield as the health and vision provider. Award the contractor, Alpena Agency, as the city's dental, life, long-term disability insurance agent, and approve the use of BCBS Simply Blue Health Vision as outlined in the memo.
Second.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
Thanks, Greg.
Didn't do the third recommendation.
Yeah, he did. He mentioned it.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, he did say the third one.
Somebody wasn't listening. He stopped short of the attached spreadsheet and said.
Yep.
I said in the memo.
He said as in the memo.
As in the memo. I could amend that if you want me to. But you're reading the next one. I would have just said as written. Next up is C, Public Act 152 Health Insurance Premium Opt-Out.
Okay, each of the last four years, council has concurred with the request from the city manager to opt out of the PA 152 health insurance cost options, which are one of two that are there. One is the default, and the other is the secondary. The default being the maximum local government premium contribution for single person, two-person, and family coverage, also known as the hard cap, where the state tells you this is how much the city can pay for each of those plans. This is the default option, if no other action is taken, you must do that. The other is local governing body contribution limited to 80% of the cost of the medical plan regardless of type, and this requires a majority vote. Instead, the council, by required two-thirds vote, which is what's required to opt out, each time it has been unanimous, agreed to opt out of both of these options. This action allowed administrative employees to contribute an amount consistent with the contributions previously negotiated with the city's five bargaining units. Back in 2013, during negotiations, each of the unions agreed with management on a phase-in approach to attaining a 20% contribution for his or her health insurance plan. Even though it had been determined that the 80/20 co-share was the best option for both the city and the employees, if it was implemented all at once, it could be a major, and it would have been, a major financial burden on certain segments of the city workforce. So, during the 2000 negotiations, each of the five unions and staff recommended and presented a proposal for the four-year phase-in towards the 20%, and they all agreed to that. And as of July 1st of this year, we've reached the 80/20. So, that phase-in is now complete. As previously discussed, and you acted upon, so it's no longer assumed, by council, the city has converted from the BCBS Community Blue Health Insurance Plans to the BCBS Simply Blue Plans, both traditional and high-deductible HSA. Overall, this will save the city money over the course of the year, however, with the city payments into the employees' HSA accounts, or even the FSA, either one, the total contribution by the city toward employee health benefits will exceed the 80% cap mandated by the act. Consequently, at this time, I would recommend that council once again approve the city opting out of PA 152 for the calendar year 2017. With the passage of PA 152 of 2014, the city must approve annually its intent to opt out, but it is no longer necessary to file the vote with the Department of Treasury. We just simply keep a record of it here, so if they ever ask. Based upon the review of plan options and their impact on the city employee co-share, staff will determine whether future opt-outs by council are required. If not, the council will still need, at least my understanding, to vote annually on the 80/20. That's my recommendation, just to opt out again.
Different reason, but just as one.
Right. Different reason, Mr. Wilson.
I move we opt out of PA 152.
For calendar year 2017.
Second.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Thank you, Greg. Next up are bids. First one is the mobile intensive care unit ambulance.
Good evening, council.
Jay?
Tonight, we have bids for the mobile intensive care unit ambulance, which replaces or actually augments the 2011 unit, which now has 200-some-thousand miles on it, is in poor condition. Five bids were received, ranging from $189.024 to $220.515. The CIP budget of the amount is $200,000, so some of the bids are under, which is good, although there is still ancillary equipment that needs to be purchased out of that as well, the radios and the gear that weren't budgeted into the truck itself. We'll still be under budget after making those purchases. Our last truck came from Mercy Sales &amp; Mark, they were the second lowest bidder this time, but we had some trouble with that one, so had they been low, we would have had to really look at that. But they weren't. The low bid is an AEV ambulance from Roland Specialty Vehicle Products, or RSVP, in Toledo, Ohio. We have a 2015 or 14 rig from AEV already, and it's working out pretty well, no problems, at $189.024. Therefore, it would be my recommendation, the council award the bid for the purchase of the Type III ambulance to the lowest responsible bidder, RSVP Incorporated, in the amount of $189.024.00.
Just a quick question for you.
Absolutely.
I don't expect you to know exactly, but, I mean, they're pretty big price tags. How much of that price is the equipment that? How much of that price is the equipment that comes with it versus just the actual vehicle?
Forty thousand of it is the cot and loading system. Several thousand is probably the lights, but other than that, it doesn't come with any medical equipment. That's the vehicle itself. The Ford chassis and then the aluminum box and cabinetry that's built onto it. Unfortunately, the cot and loading system really has jacked up the prices. Essentially 50,000 in the last year. And everyone across the country is having that same problem, but it is the minimum standard now. As you recall, when we started phasing those in a few years ago, we were trying to be closer to the front of the pack. Now, we're kind of at the end of the pack. Everybody has to now. But the good news is that as far as the cotton loading systems, we haven't had a single lifting or back injury since we started implementing them. And all three first-line units are now equipped. So that's, that's very good, very good news.
Ultimately saves the city money.
Mm-hmm, a lot of it, absolutely. We've had employees in the past that got injured and were actually medically retired. Cost a fortune. So if we can avoid that, not only is it good business for the city, it certainly is good for the employee as well.
How much do you anticipate it would take to get the equipment that you need?
The deer guard's about $700. The radio, the radios, I'm waiting for a quote. I'm not sure exactly. But it will not go over budget. We can't have that.
Will what we need.
Isn't that right, Karen?
Absolute. If you have to sell pencils on the side.
Pencils, no problem, sir.
Thank you, chief. Oh, you have more?
Yep, one other question, the old unit. Is that part of the trade-in? Is it being sold off?
No, the old unit is still serviceable. It's not nearly in the shape it was a few years ago, but it's still serviceable, and that will be the backup MICU. We frequently run into situations now where we have two requests at the same time. And we don't wanna use county rigs on city runs. We need city-owned rigs for city runs. We did purchase two reserve units to get us through periods when we had vehicles down in past years. 103 is a ninety-four and 110, or 108, rather, is a ninety-one. And most likely, one of those two will be retired when the unit goes into service. Surely newer rigs are a good thing, but we need dependable ones. And that's one of the main keys to this. With critical care patients especially, we can't have breakdowns, so it's just not an option.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Well, not the beleaguer of the subject, but can you take some of the equipment from the ones that you plan to retire and beef up the newer ones? Or will it work to put old equipment?
Not the radio equipment. And the transfer cars don't have deer guards. Only the long-distance cars do because they cost money. But as far as the medical equipment, yes, we will. We'll move all the medical equipment from one rig to another.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Action on that.
I move we award the bid to RSV Incorporated in the amount of 189,024.
Second.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Next up, Public Safety Building Variable Air Volume Replacement and Controls.
Evening, everybody. Just a quick update here and ahead on some of those items, projects that we've got going. City Hall is about ninety percent complete. They still have a little bit of more ceiling and some top pointing they need to do, and they're due to be back this week. Water treatment plant project is going very well with the heating down there. Prairie Park's getting a furnace in. I've already put in some pre-applications to DTE Energy. We've already been approved for some incentive monies to come back. And so a lot of the projects are moving forward, you know, really well, and I'm really pleased with how they're going, so. On September 26, 2016, the city received an open bid for the Public Safety VAV replacement and controls. Bids were posted on the city volcano website with two local bids received. Bids included five alternatives, ranged from 84,894 to 140,202 dollars. The base bid and alternative M4 are the required items to complete the VAV replacement on the first floor. In review of both bids, base bid plus alternative M4, prices range from 58,666, I wish that number was a little different, to 110,912 dollars. We budgeted $40,000 for the 2016-2017 year to complete this project. We also required design assistance from a Spicer engineer that was approved at $4,000, making the total project of 62,666. The scope of the project is to remove the existing VAV units on the first floor, install a new VAVs, including hot water coils, valves and control system. The existing VAV units are no longer, are original with the building, with most of them not working properly or at all. Parts are difficult to find and are expensive when they are found. This results in additional use of energy and higher utility bills, comfort issues and overall building performance. As both bids put us over budget, I met with Court Treasurer, Finance Director Karen Hebert to review how we still may fund the project. We looked at other public safety projects budgeted for this year. We have budgeted $40,000 to replace the flat roof areas on the building and anticipate bids to come in around 38,000. We have a $4,000 balance in the Public Safety Construction Fund and anticipate $2,000 in incentive dollars, which totaled to be $8,000. The VAV project is still short, $6,666. Rather than take the balance from the fund balance, I anticipate there will be a decent amount of money left from each of the public safety department's building maintenance budget. Any shortage at that time could come from the roof project, not slated to be completed until spring of 2017. It is my recommendation as the Assistant City Billing Official that we award Lake Shore Plumbing and Heating the contract for the Public Safety VAV project at a price of $58,666. At the completion of the project, we will review the funds available to complete the roof repair project and if necessary, request funds from the fund balance. The fund balance is the very last place that I anticipate to look for the money. I believe that the building maintenance dollars that are currently budgeted for the 2016-2017 will be significantly lower because we're not gonna have the major repairs that we've seen over the past several years for the building repairs. And the bulk of that's been, you know, the heating system, the VAVs. We've got a lot of that fixed now. And so we continually move forward. We considered options of only putting partial of the first floor VAVs in. And I don't wanna do a, you know, I don't wanna do half the job. If we're working on the first floor, I anticipate to complete that whole first floor.
Anything that stood up, Mike, that caused the overrun or the estimate? Because normally, you're right on or you're a little bit higher. Was there a scope of work that was maybe missed in the original design?
Well, some of it was, we only had two bidders on it. We might've saved a few thousand dollars had we had some, a couple more bidders. One of them, there was a communication issue internally with one of the bidders, and then the other one had an emergency. Some of it was related to the type of the VAV when I looked at them. I had looked at one brand, and then the brand that was being recommended was of a superior quality. So we considered going to a less quality VAV unit, but review of them, the performance on these were outstanding and said, let's just admit that, you know, I didn't look necessarily at the right ones. Control-wise, we were right within there. It was simply the cost of the VAVs and the labor to install those that I hadn't hit the nail on the head.
Thanks, Mike.
Chief Forbes said you could sell pencils or something.
I told him, I told him.
I think that would be an easier approach, sir, than asking Karen to come out of the chat.
Probably, probably. Thank you, Mike. Great work. I don't know if anyone had any other questions for Mike. Pretty thorough.
I move we award the bid to Lake Shore Plumbing and Heating for the VAV project.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, next bid is the 2016 through 2018 tree planting program.
Excuse me, we're trying something new.
Is that right?
So, on October 11, 2016, the city received an open bid for the 2016 City of Alpina Tree Program. This is probably the fifth time in the last three years that we've bid out the trees. Either no bids, extremely high bids, just difficulty getting people to bid on this. After the last time, none of the local bidders bid. We called them to find out what's going on. And it ranged from your packets too much information in it because we have to put all of our specs in, to, oh, I forgot about it. So when we rebid it out for October 11, Shannon, out of our office, basically held her hand, led them along the way, answered the questions to get them to bid. And we were able to get three bids, two of them local. The three bids received were from MacArthur Construction, Pratscape LLC and G&amp;J Site Solutions, last one being out of Calumet, Michigan. I mean, that's how far we searched for bidders. I'm not gonna run through each tree type, but the low bid from Pratscape provided a price of $250 per tree, and that is planted with the guarantee that was spelled out in the specifications. Over the last several years, and this is quite honestly, we were this far behind. We've got 700 trees that we've taken out. A lot of, a lot of elms or ashes, excuse me, that have died. And we've been, that's why we've been trying to get bids and to stretch our dollars as far as we can. They said bids been solicited on, excuse me, four separate occasions, with the current bid opening finally producing interest in the project at a financial amount allowing for a contract to be awarded. The intent of the proposed contract is to award the as-bid prices for both the 2016 and 2017, 18 fiscal years, as listed above. A five-year extension clause has been included. We did that because we had such a difficult time getting bidders to begin with for continuation of the contract if both parties can negotiate acceptable prices. Funding has been established in major and local street funds for this project. And what that, we've also got the tree fund, which was money that was donated to the city to establish that tree fund. And we were, every year, we were putting money in in anticipation of getting bids, and then at the end of the year, we were taking it back out because we weren't spending it. But that, with this, the bid that we received and the price that we received, I'll be getting with Karen to do a budget amendment to pull that money out of the tree fund so that we can put it into major locals, parks and the cemetery while we've removed a lot of those trees. It is my recommendation as city engineer that the project be awarded to Pratscape LLC for the bid unit prices not to exceed $60,000. The tree planting will occur in the spring and fall of 2017.
Is that this fund, that's this fund here that's the tree slash park improvements? It's 99,076 there.
We all, we're getting with Karen on that to do a budget amendment.
Okay.
I think that's gained a little bit in interest, not a whole lot, but.
No, not a whole lot. We went through about half of it, and a lot of it was for Starlight.
Yeah, that was a, that was a separate.
Yeah. They allowed us to use some of it for park improvements, so we were fortunate that we had it for that.
Who's that?
McClay, McClay Trust. That's the family that donated the money.
Daniel, how many trees? We can't possibly replace 700 trees next year.
This would cover about 240 trees.
That way, at least we're, I mean, we could supplement it with all our funding for the major local street funds and parks and that. We certainly don't have the money out there to do 700 trees.
Rich, these, an inch and a quarter, you said, what is it? How much is it?
That's the caliber of the tree.
I was just trying, is that smaller? Are we getting smaller and smaller every year or is there?
This is what was recommended to us.
Oh, really?
I mean, we went on, we talked to the local landscape company, Pratscape, that is, oh, look at Greg, because Greg wants a four-inch tree.
No, I'd love that, but, no. I was always used, when I, when I was in my landscape architecture days, was that two, two-and-a-half inch were very common. And those would be bald and grilaf. Well, now, those trees are running, I don't know, four, five, six hundred dollars.
I see.
And so, you know, you just can't get them. So these are, these are probably half the size diameter-wise than what. The biggest concern is not so much the diameter, it's that do they have at least a somewhat developed head? Because it's a lot, you get a lot better tree if the head has been developed in the nursery than if it's like a whip. And really, it's up to those who plant it then to shake the tree, and that's a lot more work. These should have a fairly developed head on them, even at an inch and a quarter.
The wind seems to whip the smaller trees pretty significantly, especially in the winter. It's pretty rough.
Everything will be staked.
You think?
They will be.
I hope they, I hope it does well.
And what we'll do is, the contractor's responsible for the initial watering. And what we do is wherever we, we're gonna plant these trees, we send a letter to the property owner telling them, Karen, maintenance. And we work with the contractor to develop that letter, you know, how often it should be watered, how much it should be watered, to help promote the growth of that, of that tree.
Excellent. There you go. Thank you, Rich, and thank Shannon as well for her work on that.
We'll be awarding Pratscape LLC the 2016 Tree Planting Program contract.
Second.
Noak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Assuming you're staying there for something. Next up is new business, AS2016 CIP Contract Modification Number One.
Following award of the 2016 Campwood Improvement Program bids, we went to the low bidder, MacArthur Construction, and requested pricing for additional work, which was still under design and permitting at the time we bid that out. We didn't mind to lay those bids while we waited for this. The additional work includes installation of replacement waters between Johnson Street and Long Lake Avenue and replacement of the sewer from Johnson Street through the north property line of the Austin Brothers Brewery. The existing sanitary line serving them is deficient and has caused backups to the brewery on weekly basis. Mike was again, Galitsky was again begging me today to get that in as soon as possible because they are out there, like, weekly with backups in that line. It is anticipated that this situation, the backup, will only get worse as weather gets colder and the systems begin to freeze. The water project will provide a 12-inch water main from Johnson Street up to Long Lake Avenue. This will provide redundancy and additional flow capabilities to the north area. Up in the Palm Street Commerce Drive area, we have the initial pressure, but because of the flow capabilities, that pressure does drop off as the flow is being used. With this 12-inch that runs up there, it's replacing a four-inch that runs along the tracks. This will provide that additional redundancy and flow capabilities to the north area of the city. This will provide that additional redundancy and flow capabilities to the north area of the city. Due to the issues with the sanitary sewer in the fast approaching winter, the city is proposing a contract modification to the two thousand sixteen CIP contract to facilitate the work. The prices are as follows. The sanitary sewer is twenty-nine thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. And the water main is one hundred and thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars. Total of one hundred and sixty thousand eight fifty. MacArthur Construction has also indicated that they will install the sanitary portion of this project yet this fall, allowing for the Austin Brothers to be connected to the new sewer before winter. Funding has been established in the water and sewer funds with the prices for the project below the established budget amounts. It is my recommendation as city engineer to execute a contract modification with MacArthur Construction for the bid unit prices totaling one hundred and sixty thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars for the utility extension from Johnson Street to Long Lake Avenue. Just as an aside, we've also been in discussion with MDEQ, who will be doing some work up in there. Part of the, getting the sanitary sewer lying in is not going to be as big of an issue. We've, there's some contamination out there that the DEQ will be removing. Our proposed sanitary line, kind of maneuvers between all those. There's one small area that we will go, that we'll have to go through. And they will have folks on site when we, when we're digging that to monitor it. The water main would have traveled through some additional areas. So the long, we'll either delay that till spring or the DEQ gets in here, which they're planning to about November first. If they get that cleaned up, then we could continue with the water main this fall. But it's kind of a work in progress and working with the DEQ on that, on that installation.
Excellent. Any questions? Brought it up a few times, we've talked about this before. Take action on that?
I move we execute a contract modification with MacArthur Construction for the bid unit price of one hundred and sixty thousand eight fifty for the utility extension.
Second.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora? Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
Sorry. Answering for Nielsen as well. Apparently she was, she was going to give you a yes.
I get more and solicit it help.
What looks nice, I think.
Revision to council policy statement number seven, tobacco use.
Good evening.
Kathy?
Karen should have given you a revision. We found a couple things that will need to clarify and consistency throughout the document. I assume you all have it. Okay. Several months ago, some concerns were brought to the manager's office. And Greg and I sat down and we talked about those concerns. And then he spent a great deal of time on the manager's listserv to see what other communities did as far as tobacco use and also smokeless cigarette use. Things varied all over the place, to tell you the truth. We found that we probably didn't address everything that we should when we put this into place. And I believe two thousand ten, I didn't bring my copy, I apologize. But then I did some additional research within our community and realized through that as well that we probably weren't doing this as much as we should be doing with this particular policy. So we tried to be fair and take what other communities and other businesses in our area were doing and also stay within Michigan law. And then we also took the city's wellness initiative, which is relatively new, into account to try to incorporate that somewhat into the policy. This is not going to come without resistance, and we know that. But it is not a personal attack on anyone. It is really what we feel is in the best interest of the city and the employees. So we are going to work with the staff and the department heads to implement this, to make sure that receptacles are used appropriately and try to make it a very smooth transition so that we can make adjustments and make sure that this happens timely as well as appropriately with people's feelings in mind. So it is my recommendation to council to accept the changes that are indicated on CPS number seven, unless you have any questions or concerns otherwise.
Can you briefly maybe explain why you included smokeless cigarettes, like e-cigarettes, as part of the policy? Because I know a lot of institutions are hips of no tobacco. And then they run into that issue with, like, e-cigarettes.
That is absolutely correct. It is the e-cigarettes that is a concern for us. And I don't know if there's, if that's actually the brand name. I'm not familiar with these, but that's exactly the thing. And I think that part of it is that the research depends what you listen to. But there is research indicating that some of the vapors are not necessarily healthy because I think it's still being developed. And so just to be sure that we were creating a safe environment as well, we included that in there. It doesn't mean that at some point in time, we can't visit this again. But right now, it just seemed like the right thing to do for safety and wellness.
And what, what is your suggestion to staff as far as enforcement goes?
Well, I think for the biggest part, for some of the concerns that Greg and I heard were that as you walked into a doorway, that the receptacles were right next to the doorway. And so our staff maybe is not doing anything to harm anyone else, but we were negligent in not putting those receptacles where they were. People did not have to walk through them on a regular basis. So that's one thing that we know that we can correct. As far as tobacco, that it's not smoked but chewed or whatever, you know, the little baggies and such, not everybody is actually using a receptacle to put those away. So we need to be sure that we pick up after ourselves at our age as we all should. So that's something that we really need to, I guess, hammer home and make sure that everybody does their part in cleaning up after themselves and not leaving things laying around and such. So those are the things that we really need to educate people that we don't all need to see those type of things. Did I answer that?
Sure.
Okay. Good, thanks.
Please educate people that cigarette butts are littered too.
That's right, absolutely. Anything else?
Not for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
We need a motion?
Yeah. We're going to take action on that, anyone?
I move we approve revision to CPS seven, tobacco use as presented.
Second.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
You gotta wait for it.
Thank you. Kathy. And next up, C is the backup server sharing agreement with the county of Elpina. Excuse me, Steve?
Oh, back in two thousand ten, the city partnered with Elpina County to change over from an antiquated take-back-up system to a NAS-based system, which is networked data storage, to protect us from data loss or corruption. The system has worked well for many years. But with the, with the implementation of many new BSNA databases and the ability to add pictures and different reports and things to these databases, along with our increasing need for security camera, video footage, and police car video footage, we just, our size, the size of a server just isn't enough anymore. The current backup can, the current system can back up all of our existing data without issue, but the space available affects the time that we can keep each of these backups and how many full backups we can keep on file. We've had a situation over the past twelve months or so, quite a few times, where files that are only used for quarterly or yearly reporting aren't looked at very long. And then when you go back to them, if something has happened to them, they're not in the backup sequence anymore because they've been overwritten. We have about a ninety-day backup system right now. So we'd like to, like to lengthen that out if we could. The county kind of demonstrated these same needs. And they went ahead and solicited quotes for larger devices. And Eric Vander suggested that we employ a similar NAS sharing agreement with them again. And he needed to buy these things fairly quickly. So he ended up advertising for them and getting them near the end of the city's fiscal year. And he told us, he's just going to, you know, get us online. And then when we can get into the next budget year and pay for these things, he suggested we just do that. And the county just recently approved the attached NAS sharing agreement and the pricing split. And it's my recommendation as IT coordinator that the city council approve the super-micro NAS sharing agreement and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute it on behalf of the city. This purchase is really considered new technology because we're supporting, supporting new things that we didn't have back when the first backup system went into place. And it's typically programmed into durable goods. So what I'll have to do is move that durable good money into capital purchases. And that's what I intend to do, and there's sufficient funds to do that. The agreement itself, I thought I emailed it over to Bill earlier last week, and it didn't get there. So he got it today. I would just wait for his, his approval on the agreement itself. And then we'll go ahead and, and get it signed and get it into place, so.
He'll read it tonight before he goes to bed.
I figured he'd read it between.
I actually write it at dinnertime. I'm good with it. You guys are good with it. Okay.
Great, thank you.
Steve, you've been very happy with our relationship.
I have, yeah. Yeah, it's worked out really well, yep. I'm very happy.
So if we take action on this, you, you're ready to purchase, make your purchase and start backing up?
Yeah, we already are.
That's all.
It was just, it was needed.
It was just, okay, right.
We're just going to pay our share.
He's going to pay your share.
I'm sure we, we figured out something or we would rent the things from them. But I think we just need to purchase it and be done with it. But it's, it's been a nice setup for us. You know, we each have a system and we partition it in half. And we back up their backup and they back up our backup. And they're in separate locations. It's just, it's ideally, it's the way it should be.
Okay. Excellent. Next, Steve.
I move we approve the super-micro NAS sharing agreement and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute it on the city's behalf.
Second.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
I move we...
Second.